They're gonna add in the microphones and then the cameras will also get active. So that's.
Yes, that is there in case you wanted to plug in a laptop or something like that that you really like to use for a presentation.
Good morning, everybody. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The prayer today is, don't worry, God is never blind to our tears, never deaf to our prayers, and never silent to our pain. He sees, he hears, he will deliver. Amen.
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Adrian Gordon with the Commissioner's Office. Today's financials include appropriations transfer to the sheriff for miscellaneous refunds, reimbursements, and web checks that were deposited into the general fund. Among the encumbrances are travel requests from ADP to attend the New World ERP User Summit, from JFS to attend the 2025 Daniel Memorial Growing Pain Conference, and from the Juvenile Court to attend the 2025 Juvenile Court Clerks Conference. Among the vouchers are $236,484 from the Auditor's Office to Gannett Funding Incorporated for their annual GIS managed services fees for the cloud implementation, $55,296 from the sheriff to State Wholesale Supply Incorporated for eight in-car video camera installations, and $37,669 from the sheriff to Interaction Insight Corporation to purchase a new 911 recorder replacement. And there's a revenue certification from the Department on Aging for unbudgeted revenue received in 2025 for the transport van that was totaled.
I'll make a motion to approve the financials.
Second.
Commissioner Spillier.
Aye.
Commissioner Brinkley.
Aye.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Ohio Guide Stone is requesting the Board approve and execute a letter of support to the Ohio Developmental Disabilities Council in support of the grant application for pathways to progress, community outreach, and family engagement for individuals with developmental disabilities. This grant will support the expansion of their Beyond Limits program with outreach efforts and engagement within the communities and counties it serves, including Geogga County.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Kimberly Brown with Ohio Guide Stone. I am the Senior Manager of Workforce Operations for our Workforce 360 Department. Ohio Guide Stone's been around since 1864, where we started out as an orphanage for Civil War orphans. And we have blossomed now into 33 counties across the state of Ohio and northeastern, northwestern, and, you know, the other ones. Northeast, northwest, southeast, southwest counties. We're all over, from Cincinnati to Columbus to Toledo. What we are doing, two years ago, we started with Geogga County local funds and were able to start a program for helping individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities in Geogga County, get them ready for work, help them find work. Did that program, we're still doing that program, utilizing funds, local funds through Geogga County. From then, we went on and applied for certification through the Department of Developmental Disabilities and have been running that program now for a year as of today. So two years now we've been doing this. We've been given the opportunity to write for a grant where we would be able to hire an individual to do community outreach within three counties, and that would be Lorraine County, Cuyahoga County, and Geogga County, because let's be honest, Geogga County A1 since day one, as far as I'm concerned. This is where we started. This is where we're going to stay. Also, I live here, so that's a big bonus right there. So we would want to hire somebody to be like a community engagement specialist, where they would be able to put on different county events, introducing Ohio Guide Stone to individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities, getting the SSAs involved, everybody at the county boards involved, and having these community outreach programs. This grant would help fund the first year of half of their salary, and Ohio Guide Stone would pick up the other half of their salary. It would also include those community events that I spoke about. Continuing on from here on out, I believe that Ohio Guide Stone would still have the community engagement specialists even without the grant, starting next year, because I believe, you know, we have a three-quarter of a million dollar budget for that particular branch of the Workforce Department. And I believe by next year, we'll be able to support that person 100%. This is just getting that person in the door, getting our legwork going, and this grant was a perfect way to do that. This grant is not a grant that, you know, that's from Geogga County. It is from the Council of Developmental Disabilities for the state of Ohio. And I heard that, and I heard it was brought up last week, but that some people had questions, so I'm here to answer your questions.
You answered them all in that introduction, so that was. It was very informative. You anticipated all, like, seven of my questions. There weren't that many. But no, that answered everything that I had.
All right. I would also like to say that in Geogga County, not only do we have the program for individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities, but we also run the comprehensive case management and employment program for JFS in the area 19 NACOG, and we've been doing that for almost 10 years now. So we are throughout the entire county helping to find jobs for individuals ages 14 to 24 who don't have the necessary skills to stay self-sufficient. So, yeah, so we're all over.
And how do you coordinate with Metz and Baum with these services?
Oh, absolutely. So I was down at Metz and Baum. I introduced our program to them. The SSAs reach out when they have somebody that needs our services. Right now, we have 10 individuals in Geogga County that are utilizing our services. So I work very closely with Tammy Setlock and Megan Theron, and of course, all the SSAs over there at the Department of Disability.
Great. Thank you for coming in and explaining all of that. I'll make a motion to approve item number two.
Second.
Commissioner Spillier.
Aye.
Commissioner Brinkley.
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you very much. And welcome back, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Shane Hajar, Deputy with County Engineers Office, presenting items three through eight today. Item three, the County Engineers Office is requesting the Board approve and execute change order number one, and final, decreasing the contract with Grade Line Incorporated for the replacement of culverts on various roads in Munson Township in the amount of $770.32.
Shane, what led to the decrease in price?
Our team in the field is working really hard to save the county money.
All right.
No, just minor adjustments between planned quantity and actual installed quantity.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve item number three.
Second.
Commissioner Spillier.
Aye.
Commissioner Brinkley.
Aye.
Items four, five, and six are new contract executions. Item number four, County Engineers Officer requesting the Board approve and execute unit price contract with Roniak Paving Incorporated for the placement of crack seal on various roads in Geogga County in the amount of $232,825.
And the two through?
Second.
Commissioner Spillier.
Aye.
Commissioner Brinkley.
Aye.
I have a question.
Yes.
Is that road miles calculated in the bid, or is it for per material used?
So it's a little both. We have 35 miles of road that we intend to perform crack seal on, and there's a tonnage of material that they bid. So we'll use that material on those roads until the material is depleted.
I vote yes.
Thank you. Item number five, County Engineers Officers requesting the Board approve and execute unit price contract with Oglesby Construction Incorporated for the pavement markings of various roads in Geogga County in the amount of $269,572.85.
I move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Spillier.
Aye.
Commissioner Brinkley.
Aye.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Thank you. And item number six, County Engineers Officers requesting the Board approve and execute the unit price contract with Roniak Paving Incorporated for the asphalt resurfacing of Wilson Mills Road, County Highway Eight, Sections G through L in Munson Township in the amount of $1,269,675.
I move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Spillier.
Aye.
Commissioner Brinkley.
Aye.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Item seven and eight relate to two new projects that are OPWC funding, and it's to allow Commissioner Dvorak, who is the CEO for that project, to sign the agreement electronically. Those agreements should have been emailed out this morning. I did receive notifications from other grant applicants that they got that email this morning. So. Item number seven, County Engineers Officers requesting the Board approve and execute Resolution 25-138, authorizing James W. Dvorak, board member of the Geogga County Board of Commissioners, Chief Executive Officer of the Ohio Public Works Commission, Project DGAC01, to electronically execute and submit the project grant loan agreement for the asphalt resurfacing of Sperry Road, County Highway 12, Sections B through G in Newberry, Russell, and Chester Townships.
Shane, do we know the amount of that grant?
That one is $500,000.
Okay. And then what percent of the project will that cover?
It's just under 50%.
Okay. All right. Well, I'll take it. I move to approve item number seven.
Second.
Commissioner Spillier.
Aye.
Commissioner Brinkley.
Aye.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Thank you. And similarly, item number eight, County Engineers Officer requesting the Board approve and execute Resolution 25-139, authorizing James W. Dvorak, board member of the Geogga County Board of Commissioners and Chief Executive Officer for the Ohio Public Works Commission, Project DGAC02, to electronically execute and submit the project grant loan agreement for the asphalt resurfacing of Fairmount Road, County Highway 16, Sections C through E in Russell and Newberry Township.
And the amount of that one?
That one is $250,000.
And the amount of the percent of the project that covers?
It's about 40% of that project.
Okay. I move to approve item number eight.
Second.
Commissioner Spillier.
Aye.
Commissioner Brinkley.
Aye.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much.
Good morning.
Good morning. Scott Odenbrand, Tom Rowan from Sheriff's Office. Item number nine. I have a quick question for Christmas. The agenda shows a different grant number than our request.
Grant number. Yeah, I thought that too. Yeah. I think that first grant number is wrong.
Well, hold on. It is 477.
Yeah, it's 2024. I have 20, I think on the paperwork, it said 2024 JG-
Yes.
Dash A03-4707.
When I started working on this, I put that grant number in, and that's when I realized that the paperwork was backwards on the request, and I missed that grant number, because when I said-
That's what I figured, because, yeah. There were numbers that were switched, yeah.
So this grant had this paperwork, and this request record had this grant paperwork. They were switched when they came in, and I didn't catch it, so. I apologize. It's 2024 JGA03477.
Yep, that's right.
We're good.
We're good.
I just want to make sure you approved the right one.
Yeah, no, I'm on top of it. I got it.
You want them both, right?
Right.
Yeah, we just want to make sure the right grant numbers and the right amount and so forth.
So number nine, these are both, nine and 10 are for flock cameras. Number nine is a $25,500. The local match is $6,375. That's for approximately five flock cameras. You want to do that one separate, or you want to do them together?
We can do them together.
And number 10 is another grant for $12,750, and that is, will purchase about three flock cameras, and there is no local match on that one.
How many flock cameras do we have in the county currently?
I think there's 10.
We have 10, but then, like, Russell, South Russell, and Baybridge have three as well.
We connect with even the Lake County ones. They can look at Willoughby Hills, whatever is around us. And quite frankly, we use those probably once a day.
Well, that's what I was going to ask. Are there any, like, interesting stories you can share publicly? Gina, don't laugh at me about.
Well, one of the most recent ones, we had an alert out of the state of Virginia. It had to deal with, like, a mental health individual and purchasing guns and trying to get guns and come over this way and kill some family members. Well, we found out the family members lived in Geogga County, and the flock camera actually picked him up on 422, and we were able to get him stopped and seized on the freeway before he came to Grandma and Grandpa's house to kill them. So it's a handy thing to have. If we wouldn't have got the alert, you know, we'd never have known about it. So we also have, you know, like, endangered seniors, like, silver alerts and amber alerts. All those go into the system as well, and we have access to any of the flock cameras anywhere around. We can log into the system, and then our guys actually have access to that in their cruisers. They can turn them on at the beginning of shift and get flock alerts for different things while they're working.
And then is there, like, an annual fee for the software? There is. Okay. And so what does that look like? Is that like a per camera?
That's not cheap.
Okay.
Mostly the storage it costs for.
It's about storage for everything.
Yeah.
So that's in our, we budget that in our contract services.
Okay, okay. That's all right. But like, does it go up then, per camera?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Everything goes up.
I figured. All right, so I'll make a motion to approve item number nine and 10.
Second.
Commissioner Spillier.
Aye.
Commissioner Brinkley.
Aye.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
ULA Mulcahy Community and Economic Development.
And Gina Horstetter, same department.
We have requests on the agenda. Number 11 is, Community and Economic Development Department is requesting the Board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the Ohio Department of Development Building Demolition and Site Revitalization Program Grant Agreement for the period of July 4th, 2023, through December 31st, 2025, in the amount of $500,000.
So why are we executing this agreement that occurred for a period partially in the past? Can you explain to me what's going on here?
So the way that the state runs this is they pick a set date, and it's always July 4th, July 1st of an odd year. But they, it can go back. You can use it for, like, a purchase of a, you know, I don't know why exactly they do that, but they just run it that way. Because the grant didn't open until, I think that one was November, and it closed in April of '24. So you can, it's a six-month application period.
Okay.
So.
And then, so was the county was already awarded these funds?
We have been awarded these funds, yes.
When did that happen, and then for what projects were these for?
That happened, we signed the agreement in 20, we applied in March of '24. We were awarded at the end, I think it was October, November of '24, and it took that long for them to get this agreement to us. And then we had prosecutor's office had some changes that they were requesting, so that took a little bit longer too. But it is for two projects. One of them is the Chardon Schools Bus Parking Lot over on Washington, and that project is almost finished, and it looks fantastic. The other one is a private homeowner in Newberry. That's gonna, and that house is pretty much falling down. We have two more, but they ended up dropping out. So it's just two projects now.
Great. So I'll make a motion to approve item number 11?
Just to add to that, that grant agreement and document went to the prosecutor's office sometime in October of '24. So it has taken that long to get it processed and executed. And typically, we'll see an extension that's granted from the state on these, so.
Okay. Is that what happened here? There was an extension?
It was, yeah. It was done June 30th, so yesterday. We just got the extension for that to December 31st.
Okay.
And we're still waiting on that, are we not?
I would also like, no, I have that one. No, I have that one. I would also like to ask if we can electronically submit that, because the state, in the last two months, I didn't put it on my request for action, but the state has gone to an electronic submission recently in the last month or two, and everything has been going to Mr. Dvorak. We've been having to reach out to you to get copies of it. So I was wondering if we could electronically submit that also.
That's fine with me. So let's call the question for item number 11, and then we can make another motion regarding the electronic submission, if that's acceptable with you.
That's great. Thank you.
Commissioner Brinkley.
Aye.
Yes.
So then I'll make a motion to approve the grant application set forth in item number 11 electronically.
Second.
Commissioner Spillier.
Aye.
Commissioner Brinkley.
Aye.
Yes.
Okay. And then our second item, number 12, is Community and Economic Development Department is requesting the Board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the Ohio Department of Development Brownfield Remediation Program, Brownfield Remediation Reimbursement Agreement between Geogga County and 7145 Pine LLC and 7139 Pine Street LLC in the amount of $2,917,012.
And this was a response to that ownership change?
Yes.
Correct. Essentially the same owners, right? Different companies?
We needed, it's more of an access agreement.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we had all of the other documents you received with this packet, the access agreement and the clean hands affidavit for 7139. Everything was submitted for 7145 with the application.
Okay.
So that's why there's only one of those.
This is the one that's 25% match?
It is, yes. Yeah.
From the owner, right?
From the owner, correct.
I was like, what?
No, no, not us.
What are we having on?
No, they have, I believe, they have a $700,000 match. That's what they're.
We've been working through this since December of 2023.
Wow. So this is a substantial project. I mean, is it being worked on right now, or?
No.
No.
They have not started it.
Okay.
No.
They are.
And we are doing a grant, we have confirmation from the state that we will be getting an extension through December 31st, but I have not received that extension yet. So.
Okay.
That's a loan we are waiting on with Mr. Dvorak to get soon.
Yes, hopefully.
All right, so I'll move to approve item number 12.
Second.
Does this one also have to be?
No, no, this is just our reimbursement agreement with 71455. No.
Commissioner Brinkley.
Aye.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
I just want to take a quick minute to thank and acknowledge you for all of her work that she's put into this. This is.
She did not know you were going to say it.
Yes, and I'm very sorry. This is untoward water for both of us, and these are massive amounts of dollars. The projects are huge for our community, and we're super excited about it, but to execute these documents is really no joke. And she has worked tirelessly for what we're going into, what, almost two years now? So I really would love to acknowledge you and appreciate you. I would like her to go faster, but it took.
That's not the way government works, unfortunately. I'm trying to figure that out too.
Thank you for your patience as well.
Good morning.
Tim Karas, Geogga Family First Council Coordinator. I am here for item 13. Department of Job and Family Services requesting the Board approve and execute the Geogga County Family First Mutual Funding Agreement between the Geogga County Board of Commissioners, Geogga County Job and Family Services, Geogga County Board of Developmental Disabilities, and the Geogga County Board of Mental Health and Recovery Services for the period of July 1, 2025, through December 31st of 2025. This agreement commits the Board of County Commissioners to providing a support payment of $29,739 from the general fund.
So Tim, can you talk about, so usually we would do this in the beginning of the year, right?
We, the Commissioners have always requested that we do it semi-annually, and then in January, we had a significant cash carryover. So we, the council, council chose to defer collecting on that payment. We have, in 2023, we had significantly less residential treatment needs. Those families requesting treatment has certainly ticked up substantially. We jumped from, I have a number. We jumped from, in fiscal year '24, $283,775, and this year. year, we're pretty much at seven, six hundred and thirty-two thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars. We, this county has had been an anomaly. There's a residential crisis for most of the rest of the state. Most of the rest of the state counties are placing more children. We had actually seen a decline and we're just now really pretty much on par with our average numbers for cost for treatment.
So you had sort of a dip then?
Yeah.
That was the anomaly, not right now, this six hundred, whatever.
Correct. We had a dip that I think only one other county saw. The other eighty-six counties saw increases in need for residential treatment.
Okay. And then, I mean, this is just, I guess from my historical understanding, like how does the pie get, meet up with your budget as far as what piece, you know, mental health board gets versus the commissioners and stuff?
Commissioners have a smaller portion. The Jogga Board of DD has the smallest. The biggest portion of the pie is Jogga JFS, which we're housed under and which we work most extensively with. And then the Jogga Mental Health Recovery Services Board has the largest share. You know, I don't have the percentages written.
No, that's okay. I just was curious, like what, how did those pieces get, like why?
I got yours. That predates me significantly. My predecessor, Nancy Selbach, was, I'm sure the one who worked with everybody to make those arrangements. I think most of it stems from the reality that we work most closely to the families that we impact most closely touch JFS because our primary role is to prevent JFS from taking custody of children. And then it's a, it's a mental health issue. So Jogga Mental Health Recovery Services Board has always paid the second largest proportion. We touched Jogga Board of DD a little bit. We are, I am the contract coordinator for the EI services and we do often support families that have children with developmental delays. And I think the biggest thing of note is is we are working with, almost exclusively with families that have private insurance. And the reality of it is is private insurance doesn't cover a lot of different things, including residential treatment, which, you know, has made Jogga special because we're able to help these families, which generally other counties aren't able to help the families as much as we are.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve item number thirteen.
Ms. Spudler.
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
We'll move to fifteen on the agenda. So you can set up.
Morning Roger.
Morning. Roger Peterson, Emergency Management Director, or soon to be formally known as. I started with Jogga County a little over a decade ago. Prior to that, I worked for Chevrolet for almost a decade as fire chief in emergency management. I think we all go through stages in life and I just think that it is time that I move on and go on and do good somewhere else. So I have accepted a fire chief's position for education and I'm looking forward to teaching, hopefully for the next at least decade because it seems to be what the, what the trend has been. This is a whole lot harder than I anticipated. I have enjoyed working for the county. I've enjoyed serving the residents. I haven't served, I've enjoyed even coming in at nights on the weekends, helping out for emergencies. So I appreciate the opportunity to serve the residents of Jogga County for the last ten years or so. And wanted to just come and say thank you.
Well, I've enjoyed your jokes, Roger.
Well, I'm sorry about that.
I feel like, but what if we just don't accept your resignation? Well, I wish you the best and I'll make a motion to approve item number fifteen.
Second to that. Thank you for your service. Thank you.
Ms. Spudler.
Aye.
Ms. Obrink.
Aye.
Ms. Obrink.
Yes.
And Roger, you're really, when something goes wrong in the middle of the night and you work with the sheriff's office and other fire departments and everything else, I think it's just, I just want to give you the tip of the hat that you've done a great job for over ten years and I will personally miss you.
Well, thank you. You know, one of the nurses that I used to work with, she used to always say, do good and walk away. So I think it's that time.
Okay.
Thank you.
So then we're also looking to advertise with heavy heart. I ask that we advertise for this position for Director of Emergency Services and.
Do you have a motion?
Aye.
Ms. Spudler.
Aye.
Ms. Obrink.
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you.
Item number thirteen, we have a comment here. Do we have a motion to?
So moved.
Ms. Spudler.
Aye.
Ms. Obrink.
Aye.
Ms. Obrink.
Yes.
And then, if you want to swear, if you may want to speak for the W during the hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Can you swear, anybody else?
Yes. Did anyone else want to swear to speak during the hearing? None, so we don't have to swear anyone in. What's this presentation labeled?
Twenty twenty-six tax budget.
No.
Key in between you.
Oh, there it is. I found it.
Technical challenges.
Mm-hmm. I'm just happy that all three screens are working.
Put it up. I'll make sure I'm not accidentally do that.
Well, you have to have a tab. So like, if we plug you in, then you reset it to move it on a tab. But that gives you the ability, like if you're going to share something. But for presentation purposes, instead of using the table, you put it on the podium. So it's to the number connection.
There we go. Look at that.
Okay.
Just missing one. We're missing a TV. There it is.
I've never seen all three of the marks since I've been.
First time ever.
First time ever. Thank you, ADP.
Sorry for the technical issues there. This is the first time we're using this system. So, and this will be the first time I've ever given this presentation with all three of these monitors running. So kudos to ADP for making that happen. So I'm excited. Some of the things that we can do with different things on different TVs, even in different rooms, is pretty impressive. So looking forward to seeing that. So, but since this is a public hearing and we're supposed to start at ten o'clock, I will not delay any further and get started. So I'm Adrian Gordon, Budget Finance Manager for the Commissioners' Office. We're going to be joined by Debbie Ashburn as well as Amy Bevian, County Administrator. First, I'd like to thank all the residents of Jogga County for your support to the county. Without the residents of this county, we would not be here. That's not just a cliche, it's the truth. So next, I'd like to thank all the fiscal personnel in each of the departments and the elected officials and directors, the commissioners and the auditor and our, all of our staffs as well. This is all of our budget. So. The total of two thousand and twenty-six tax budget is coming in at just under a hundred and sixty-nine million, which is approximately six point two percent less than the two thousand and twenty-five adopted budget due in large part to the McFarland Wastewater Treatment Plant upgrades project being underway now and those initial amounts that they had budgeted no longer being needed. This resulted in about a twenty million dollar decrease. There were some increases as well. We had about a three point five million dollar increase in the general fund. Metz and Baum increased a little over a million dollars due mostly to increases in client service expenses. There was a two point nine million dollar increase in the brown field remediation grant fund for the seven one four five Pine Street Remediation Project. There's also a two million dollar increase in building improvements to cover projects such as the safety center and opera house roofs, paving at Patterson Center and masonry repairs to the back of the Hannetts Building. The general fund portion is about fifty point six million. The general fund, as I said, increased three point five million. This included two hundred thousand in the Commissioners' miscellaneous expenses, a hundred and nineteen for the common pleas court, a hundred and sixty-seven thousand for the probate court, about a hundred and seventy thousand for the prosecutor's office, one point six million from the sheriff and five hundred and sixty-nine thousand from ADP and six hundred and eight thousand from maintenance with smaller additional increases and decreases spread out among the remaining departments. And we'll break that down a little bit more later in the presentation. For purposes right now, though, I just want to state Commissioners' miscellaneous expenses include operational transfers that cover items like emergency transfers, nine-one-one funding, eight hundred megahertz radios, court technology, capital projects, debt service grant matches, public assistance, Family First, which we just spoke about, community development and reimbursements. The two hundred thousand dollar increase here was due mostly to an increase in capital transfers and the Corso insurance coverage that those premiums have increased. As you can see here, the general fund requests are the same as the budget. There were no unfunded or delayed funding requests. This is part of the reason why some of those increases I mentioned were what they were because last year we had cut out about two point four million out of the budget in both, in payroll equipment and contract services that were not required this year by the Commissioners due to the amount of the unappropriated balance. The general fund was able to absorb the deficit and maintain a modest ending balance. So for instance, just to clarify, so like the one point six million that I mentioned for the sheriff's office, almost half of that, or about half of that at least, was requests that we had pulled out for equipment and vehicles. So it's not necessarily a one point six million dollar increase. It's more like an eight hundred thousand dollar increase. But when I go from the pure adopted two thousand and twenty-five budget to the pure tax budget in two thousand and twenty-six, that's why that number is the way it is. And some of that was supplemented to the sheriff and these other departments at the beginning of this year. So, but that's not reflected obviously in the adopted to the tax budget. So for two thousand and twenty-six, the tax budget includes a modest increase in revenue of just about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Most of this is a two hundred and fifty dollar increase in the sales tax. This makes the budgeted sales tax twenty-one point seven five million for two thousand and twenty-six. Now, our actual sales tax from two thousand and twenty-four was two point one eight million, two point, I'm sorry, twenty-one point eight million. We budgeted twenty-one point five for this year and the June sales tax deposit from the state just took us to the fifty-one percent of our budget level. So we're trying not to overstep on the sales tax figures. There's a lot of items that could change in the next couple of years and this whole budget could be, need to be totally redone, you know, in November of this year depending on different things that happen. So revenue that is driven almost exclusively by consumer confidence and behavior could change dramatically up or down from year to year. We have had a good run now for many years at the county here. The largest increase outside of the sales tax that we have here is cost allocation. This is due to departments that reside in the county office building paying the building capital charge and their cost allocations. Most of these other ones here, as you can see, are relatively small tweaks. So I'll take the opportunity now to invite Debbie Ashburn up. Debbie will be going over the revenue portion of the presentation.
So Commissioner DeVore, last year you appreciated that I started my presentation with a joke. So here it is. It may be the most interesting thing I say today. What do you call a belt made of one hundred dollar bills? A waste of money.
Would you like that one?
That was good.
So where does general fund money come from? So this bar graph illustrates a breakdown of the revenue sources that contribute to the general fund. Sales tax is our largest source. That's my tallest bar there. And that's, twenty-six, we're projecting that the sales tax will provide about forty-five and a half percent or twenty-one point eight million dollars of general fund revenue. Coming in second is the property tax and it's providing around eleven point five million or close to twenty-four percent of the funding. These two together, they total up about seventy percent of the general fund revenue. And I'll circle back to a little bit more about both of those in a couple of minutes here. The other sources, we have the interest income, about three million, and that is received from investments. The other portion, two point five million, that comes from rent, like Next Step or the BMV. We get revenue from the gas wells, miscellaneous grants and the auction proceeds. Property tax, transfer tax, that's about two point three million and that's the fees that are charged when a property deed is transferred to a new homeowner. The fees and fines, about two point one million. And these are fees for services charged by departments like building permits. Prisoner housing, about one point five million. And that is generated from housing out of county inmates in our jail. Casino tax, about one point five million as well. Casino tax is based on, the state bases that on the population of each county. Every county gets a little bit of that and our portion is about one point five million. We get a little bit, about nine hundred thousand from cost allocations. And those are charges to other departments that are not in the general fund for services that we provide like postage, maintenance services, insurance. And then we get a little bit of local government tax from the state. It's a stipend that comes from the state and is given to its subdivisions. So a little history, a little bit about sales tax. It was established in nineteen thirty-four. State of Ohio was having a little bit of a budget crisis. So the general simply imposed a three percent sales tax to offset the deficit. And it soon became permanently adopted and within fifteen years had become the principal source of revenue for the state. The current sales tax for Ohio is five point seven five percent now. The local governments have the option of implementing additional percentages to the state, to the sales tax rate and up to two point five percent. So Jogga County does and did in nineteen eighty-seven, Jogga County voters approved a half of an percent increase in the sales tax and then approved another half in February of two thousand and four, bringing the sales tax to its current rate of six point seven five percent. So what that all means is that Jogga County receives one percent of the sales tax while the state receives five point seven five percent. In dollars, what that means is based on the recent trends that we're projecting for Jogga County, Jogga County will collect one hundred and forty-seven point five, one point one five million in sales tax in two thousand and twenty-six. And of that, the state will receive about a hundred and twenty-five point three five million while the county will receive twenty-one point eight million, which was illustrated in the bar graph in the beginning. The map that I have up right now is shows all eighty-eight counties. The map that I have up right now is, shows all 88 counties and the current sales tax for each county. The majority of the counties that are in the light blue have a sales tax rate of 7.25%. And then the counties with the highest rate, Cuyahoga and Franklin, they're at 8%. With Lucas, Hamilton, and Chalkton Counties, they're running close behind, and those are the tan-looking counties. 26 counties represented by either green or yellow, they range between 6.75%, 7%, that's where we are, and the two purple counties, Montgomery Mahoney, Mahoney, are 7.5%. And the four left in the dark blue, they remain at the lowest rate of 6.5%. And this graph shows the overall increases and decreases in the sales tax since 2019 by a monthly comparison. So in, I'm only, I can only, I only have 2025 available for January, February, and March because the sales tax is a, is on like a 3% delay, so.
Three months.
Three.
Three months.
Three-month delay. Or I say percent?
Percent.
Three months. So anything that I would, that we receive in January, if anything the businesses collect and sell in January, then they have to report the end of February. The state calculates that in March, and then I receive, we receive the, the sales tax for Jan- January and April. So that's why I'm on a three-month delay. So actually, what you're seeing there is the, the amount of money that we're actually receiving in the actual month that it was.
Generated.
Generated. And just a quick comparison, like the first, it's hard to see those lines, but the first line is, is 2019, and the orange line, that's second from the white, that is 2024. And that was our best year to date, last year. So in the, in the increase in the sales tax between 19 and 24 was about 5.5 million. This year with the three months in, looks like we're right now about 129,000 ahead of 2025, 2024, so. Okay, with property tax. So for every dollar of property tax that a homeowner in Joga County pays, about 16.7 cents is used to fund county programs. The other remaining 83.3 cents, the local school districts receive the largest chunk, 54.2 cents. That's the large blue section. Townships receive 16.9 cents. The joint vocational school district, 2.3 cents. Special districts, 0.8 cents, and that's Riverside and Madison because they're on the county lines with.
That's not the health district?
Health district is.
Health district is part of the 16.7 cents. There's going to be a breakdown on the next slide.
I got you.
And it's important to note that this is the average over all of the areas in the county. So there may be certain townships that pay more or less, or municipalities, or wherever you live, it could be up or down, but this is the average for everywhere, so.
Yeah, so, and then the last couple left, the library is 3 cents, and the park district receives about 2.8 cents. So I'm going to take that 16.7 cents now, and I'm going to break that down because this is the portion that the county receives. Now, if you look at the green, the green section, these are all levied portions. So if, these were all voted in by the taxpayers, so they are receiving about 11.6 cents of that 16.7 cents that is given to the county. So we have, the largest portion there is the developmental disabilities. They get 5.7 cents. Children's services, 1.2 cents. Mental health, 1.6 cents. Roads and bridges, as well as senior citizens, that's interesting, those two go together, they're both 1.4 cents. And then the health district, 0.3 cents. So the, the section in blue is the general fund, and the portion that is received there is the 5.1 cents of each dollar, and that's collected from the real estate taxes. And that resulted in 11.5 million. That's a lot of nickels. Any questions? All right, Adrian. Give it back to you.
Okay, so this next one is just another graphical representation of the county's revenue. So just a couple of somewhat interesting things that we can take away from this. I'm going to try using this little laser pointer thing. Because I can't use it, can't actually. So I want to show you this, these little red lines right there at the bottom of that. That is leftover from the inside millage shift that the county did in order to pay off the safety center early. So that ended about the year I, I started with the commissioner's office. So we took a portion of the county's 2.5 mil, inside millage, and shifted that to debt retirement. And that ended in 2017. So that's where that came from. You can kind of see right up here, this little blue, that blue section, why it's a little bit larger than all the sections around it. And if you look at the, the year, it's 2020. So that was the COVID relief money that the county got during that year. Couple of other things, you can kind of see the increase in blue right here from 2023 to 2024. That is the increase in the property taxes due to the property valuations. So that's the relative increase that you see there. You can also see up here in the orange, that is the county's interest income. So our, our investment income. The, the interest rates have gone up so much, that is a big part of the reason why, you know, that, that, those orange sections are so much larger. So, and, and as interest rates continue to be high, that, as you can see, we've budgeted an increased amount for each of those for that in the, in the previous years. There was kind of a decent increase in sales tax in this area. I don't know exactly when it happened, but I know that the sales tax started getting collected on online sales. So that could be part of the reason why the, the purple section there has expanded, as well as a lot of the investment that's been going on in the county for a lot of big box stores and and different things like that. So that, that's generated a good amount of, of sales tax. So the next one is starting to get into the, the expenses. This is going to be what is going to be our estimated, and, and this is a shot in the dark, as I say every year. We do obviously like to, to have conservative carryover estimates. For budgeting purposes, we are estimating a 10.5 million dollar carryover being utilized with our healthy revenues and many projects requiring funding. The carryover will be difficult to estimate as they estimate, as they depend heavily on project schedules and the availability of necessary personnel. So that unencumbered carryover balance, which is what our cash is from one year going into the next year, minus any carryover encumbrances, these would be 2025 encumbrances that we, we take over into 2026 in order to pay bills that haven't come in yet. So that would be what's left over after that, because that's taken right off the top of our cash. Plus the calendar year revenue equals a total resources of 58.3 million dollars. And as we mentioned earlier, that's an increase of about a half a million dollars. Okay, so as I stated earlier, the 2026 tax budget for the general fund is about 3.5 million dollars more than the 2025 adopted budget. Once you take out transfers, it does drop a little bit down to 3.4 million. Commissioners have not provided any wage increases affecting 2026 wages yet. Previously, there were increases in 2023 of 5% and then 3% increases for 2024 and 2025. Some, some more of the assumptions for the budget. The county has not budgeted again for any increase in the county portion of hospitalization. Since we do not know what our renewal will be, this allows us as much flexibility as possible. We've seen increases, obviously, in insurance costs over the last several years with costs increasing in 2022 by 0.6%, 2023 by 2.3%. Employee co-insurance payments have also seen increases in those years. 1.3% increase in 2023. 2024 saw insurance premiums paid by the county increase 9% with employee co-insurance payments increasing about 8.5%. With 2025, county premiums went up about 8.6%, while the employee payments rose about 8%. Obviously, any increase or decrease that we get for 2026 will be determined once the renewal for next year has been revealed. So in other words, if we get a, say, a 5% increase in insurance, the commissioners have the opportunity to decide how much of that is going to be borne by the county and how much is going to be borne by the, the employees. So obviously, how that's going to be divided up and, and how we handle that is, is subject to change as the information becomes available. So this year, for the budget, we opted again to initialize the 2025 adopted budget, or the, the 2026 budget based on 2025 adopted budget numbers. The commissioner has also elected to reduce those initial appropriations by 10% to promote proper evaluation of the department's budget requests. This hopefully eliminated some of the extra appropriations associated with prior year balances, and hopefully gave everyone a clearer picture of what the actual budget should be. These efforts continue our work to try and reduce the amount of unused appropriations in the expense budget. Over the last several years, the general fund and the county as a whole use only about 90% of our appropriations. This continues to make budgeting difficult when you have millions of dollars worth of appropriations in the budget that realistically go unused. Although there are many reasons why this padding of the budget happens, many of which are outside the department's ability to control. We need to try and do as good of a job at controlling that as we can. Any questions on that particular slide at all?
Yeah, so, so no wage increases. I mean, is that something we should be talking about right now, what the wages increases should be county-wide?
Yeah, and I'm sure that the, the departments would like to know, you know, what, what the plans might be for the, for the future.
I'm sure the employees would as well.
Yeah. And that's something that we could still look at potentially in the permanent appropriations as well, so to be able to prepare. But typically, what has happened is if there has been any sort of increases that have been granted after the budget has kind of been finalized, I do go back and provide those appropriations for the departments based on what their budgeted requests were. So some of the departments that budget for increases already, or have unions that they have to increase, I usually take that into consideration. Either I don't give them an increase because they've already taken it, or I give the balance of the increase to the departments. So, and then that goes before you offer approval.
Okay. Yeah, because I mean, I'm, you know, when we had our budget hearings, there were some departments that took that 10% cut even to their, their wages, which is of course not what we want, you know.
Right.
So I just wondered how that all got trued up so that our employees are being fairly compensated.
Right. So I, I do, like the second half of the year, particularly like the last quarter, I do look at a lot of the accounts to see where departments are going to be short, particularly in the payroll area. And I reach out to them to, either if they're in the general fund department, to provide them with additional appropriations if it's needed, or encourage departments to supplement their accounts in order to make it to the end of the year.
Okay. And because of those union negotiations, is that why we wanted to make this decision now?
That, I mean, it does impact a couple of departments. I think the sheriff is in the middle of his negotiations, and I think water resources will be eventually here as well, so. Potentially, it could impact those, but it also would provide a kind of a baseline for those union negotiations as well. You know, there would probably, we'd be able to resist efforts potentially to, to increase those above and beyond what you guys would like to give everybody else, so.
Okay.
Well, we do have, we do have time still, but I'm, I'm sure that, as I mentioned previously, you know, the sooner we start talking about it, because I think that there were even some discussions in the office about looking at potentially doing a wage study of some sort, so. So this is a pie chart breakdown of the general fund expenses. Obviously, government is predominantly personnel-related. We are probably closely associated with service industries, which typically do have personnel expenses that encompass 75% of their budget. So we are right in that, that area with the payroll and hospitalization comprising about 73% of our overall expenses. So the, that's 73% of the expenses are related to salaries, benefits, and hospitalization. Salaries, Medicare, and Oprah is increased in the general fund by a little over a million dollars in the 2026 tax budget versus what was approved in the permanent appropriations for this year. Wage and staffing increases are mainly responsible for year-to-year payroll fluctuations. Some departments that experience notable shares of the increase are as follows. 50% of the increase was due to additional payroll in the sheriff's office. That is part of their bargaining agreement. That was about 578,000. ADP personnel, personnel costs were about 24% due to payroll expenses that were not part of the 2025 adopted budget. And we did, that was one of the departments where we had pulled back some of the, some of the payroll, and that was given again in a supplemental earlier this year. So again, I'm not saying that it's a true year-to-year increase. It was something that was supplemented that was not in the original adopted budget for this year. And then we're moving to having that incorporated instead of pulling it out. Going off the amended budget, it is, I'm clarifying that here. Going off the amended budget is only about a $49,000 increase. Maintenance accounted for about 14% of the rising costs due to increased staff and wage adjustments, but those are the time it takes to maintain two campuses. Theirs was about 157,000. Prosecutor's office was about 11.5% of that increase due to taking on municipal prosecutions as that, his staffing levels fluctuate based on that. County police court was 7% due to increased staff related to some retirements. Some notable decreases in the payroll funding include the juvenile court, which reduced their payroll for juvenile probation by 173,000. This reduction was mostly made up for in other areas. The Board of Elections reduced their payroll by 63,000, and the treasurer by about 17,000. The other categories of expenses include, but are not limited to, legal fees, utilities, fuel, travel, and training and advertising. legal fees, utilities, fuel, travel, and training and advertising. That's the other expense category. Other expenses are increasing by about four percent from this year, or about a hundred and eighty-eight thousand. Contract services include items like building grounds. Maintenance, cleaning, and security is increasing by about five hundred and sixty-two thousand or about fourteen point five percent from 2025, mostly in maintenance, which was a hundred and ninety-six thousand. The sheriff, two hundred and six thousand. Materials and supplies is decreasing slightly in 2026 by almost twelve thousand or one percent. The equipment line, and this is one that is quite different from previous years because we used to take out a lot of the equipment in the budget. The equipment line this year or for 2026 is going to be three percent of the budget, and that's between the other and materials and supplies. And includes all the equipment requests for the general fund departments because there were no reductions, no unfunded or delayed funding requests. This is a little bit different breakdown of the general fund operating expenses. Obviously, all these two are minus the operating transfers out. So forty percent of the budget goes to public safety, which is the sheriff, the coroner, and the building department. Thirty-seven point four percent of the budget goes to legislative and executive, which is the other elected officials, including the auditor, treasurer, prosecutor, commissioners, recorder, as well as support of elections, ADP board, planning, and maintenance. Judicial makes up about fifteen point four percent of the budget and includes the courts and the public defender. Remaining categories are relatively small. Conservation and recreation is the OSU extension and soil and water, which is about one point four percent of the budget. Human services is the Veteran's Service Commission, which is one point six percent of the budget. Health is the Bureau for Children with Medical Handicap Requirement at the county fund Point One Mill to treat handicapped children in the county. Major miscellaneous expenses include annual insurance liability, which is about five hundred and fifty thousand. Contract services totaling about four hundred and thirty thousand. This is mainly Ravenwood payments for the group home, for their management of it. Postage, which is two hundred thousand a year right now budgeted. Legal fees, including appointed counsel, which is about a hundred and ninety-five thousand. The Court of Appeals, fifty-four thousand, and youth detention funding, which right now is at forty-eight, although we had a fairly large payment this last time, so that we're going to have to supplement that for this year, which is still way lower than what we were paying them before, so. Any questions on this one? So this is kind of just a breakdown of the numbers for that. So public safety, legislative, executive, and the increases respectively for each of those. Judicial, conservation, recreation, human services, health, and miscellaneous. So just to kind of go over some of the different funds that are out there and their balances and what they're for. So we do have about two point six million in the senior center construction fund. This is money from the sale of the previous senior center that we transferred into this fund, along with some funds from the department that they put in there. We're currently searching for property to buy. The balance of the funds will be used for construction and renovation of the building and property. So there is still about six point two million in the American Rescue Plan Fund. That is five million for the McFarlane Wasteware Training Plant, one million for Aquila rehabilitation, and two hundred thousand is being used for seniors through the Department on Aging.
What was that for, the Department on Aging one?
That was to provide them like some accessibility and it's a bunch of different projects for the elderly, which is, was allowable use of the funds, so. The three point two million is what the building improvements, the balance of what's in the building improvements fund, will be using that to improve county buildings. Multiple projects are currently in various phases of completion. The maintenance's five-year projection has about four million in projects on the five-year plan for 2026. So we may need additional money in that fund in order to get all the things done, if we're able to, that plan has in there for you guys to look at, so. Right now, the balance of the two capital reserve funds, phase one and two. Phase one built this building. Phase two is currently constructing the courthouse expansion. That's about thirteen million dollars. Obviously, this building is complete. We still have a few loose ends to tie up here. I have about eight hundred thousand left in the fund for this. We're probably getting pretty close to the point where we're probably not going to be spending a lot more on this building. Anything that gets left in there, because it is the result of a bond issue, we would not be able to put back into the general fund because that's how these capital reserve fund phases, you know, funds work. They're like ten-year funds and anything that's left over in there has to be put back in the general fund. But this is, has money in it too from the bond, so probably what we're going to end up doing, and I'll have to do some checking on this still, but whatever funds are left, we could probably move into the fund that pays the debt on this building, so. Phase two, as I said, is courthouse expansion, which is currently under construction. It's got about twelve point two million dollars left in it. Those are, those are the major ones. So to wrap this up, as we look at the long, you know, our 2026 strategy, we have, we're doing a long-term look at our facilities. We're evaluating them for future remodeling and rehabilitation as part of the comprehensive master plan. We plan to divest as much as possible unused or underutilized county properties and consolidate operations under one footprint. And we're exploring alternative revenue streams and protective measures in anticipation of property tax or millage reductions. So I'm sure everybody in here knows there's a constitutional amendment petitions that are going around to try and get rid of property taxes. I was approached for the first time on Saturday with somebody that had one of those, so.
Did you sign it, Adrian?
I did not, and I have very valid reasons for it. I think Auditor Walder said, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a good thing being done probably for the wrong reasons or being executed in the wrong way. And that's kind of what I told him. I said, okay, so you have, you know, proposed a solution to, you know, take your money away from county government to support very valid and meaningful programs that the residents of this county have voted for. How are you going to take care of the expenses then for that? And it was kind of funny. It was like, well, they'll figure it out. The government will figure it out. And it's like, okay, but you're still going to end up paying because like, I think you said in the past too, a lot of these things are mandated by the state for us to do. So the money has to come from somewhere.
A game of whack-a-mole lately because I feel like if we push down property taxes, like sales tax, income tax are going to pop up, you know. It's like you're not going to be able to push them all down. Like, you're still, like, the levers are still going to go up.
And eventually, the game's over and you're, you're going to be stuck with whatever has popped up, so. So that's, that's kind of where we're looking at for that. So I guess at this time, are there any other questions or comments from the board in regards to the budget? We're not approving the budget today. That will be next Tuesday. So if there is anything that comes up, we still have time to react to it, so.
So the, on the last slide that talked about exploring alternative revenue streams, what are we thinking for that?
Well, that was primarily the sales tax, yeah, looking at
Okay, increasing the sales tax.
What we would need to do with the sales tax and where to take care of that.
And then I have another question about the unencumbered cash carryover that decreased from, I think that's slide 10, from 2025 to 2026. Is that just the result of the courthouse expansion project?
You mean from, are you talking about from '23 to '24?
No, no, from the amended '25. I mean, we were looking at twenty-two million and then we're looking for, estimated for '26, only at ten and a half million.
Well, we, so the reason why the 2025 amended the unencumbered carryover balance was so high was because of the ten million dollars that was in there from the ARPA funds being used.
Right, 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 so, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
So that's being, but I guess my point is that that's being spent.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, through, through the courthouse expansion and some other more minor things.
Yes.
So that's, that's a result of that being halved essentially.
Correct.
Okay. And then my other question was, there was a note about a drop in inmate incarceration reimbursement?
Yeah, that was a very small, that was a very small amount. I don't remember what slide that was.
Yeah, I think, I mean, it was only a thousand bucks, but I was a little surprised to see that because we have a different presidential administration, so I would think that that money really.
No, that's not prisoner housing, though.
Oh, it's not, okay.
This is a, this is, I think, a
That's just the pure, the intra-county.
This would be expenses that, or was that revenue? Hold on.
It's your second, I think it's your second. Yeah, it was under revenue.
At the bottom.
Sorry, I'll need the Oh, yeah, the only one, inmate incarceration reimbursement. Are you guys able to, I mean, it was a very small, it was a very small amount, so I don't know if it was just a tweak. It was probably just one of those tweaks. So I just had to highlight it because it was the only reduction in revenue that was budgeted.
And I think we're always very conservative with that, just in case, you know, something happened.
I understand.
There was a point that it really dropped off and better be conservative on the revenue side and then be happy at the end of the year when we happen a lot more.
And this isn't the prisoner housing, so the prisoner housing was, is a completely separate revenue line item. I think this might be some incidental revenue that is related to inmate incarceration.
I see.
And it's a, it's a reimbursement. It's not a, so it's where they're spending some money and then getting money back.
I see, for like medical expenses or something like that.
It might be something in regards to that, yes.
I understand. I don't have any further questions if you all want to.
Just want to thank, thank you for the detailed report and some projections and a couple of unknowns that's coming down the rest of the year, you know, so.
For sure, and I'll just mention, please, questions from the audience, please hold those until the public comments section and thank you, thank you all for your
Could we take, I mean, we have some elected officials here. Could we take the elected officials' comments at this time?
Sure.
Since, so they can go back to their jobs.
I just have, I have a comment. I mean, Adrian, I thought from a budget cycle perspective and working with me as somebody who submits a budget, I thought this year, the fourteen years I've been here, I thought this was the best year. I thought it was a more collaborative process. I, I just appreciated your efforts. And from a, from a budget commission perspective, I really appreciate, I mean, I know it was a lot of work, how much effort you've put into more accurately reflecting the carryover and drilling down on some of those things and holding some people's feet to the fire on getting you more accurate numbers, so I really don't have a bad thing to say about it. And I think that'll help us moving forward. So when you guys come in front of us, you know, in the fall, I personally, I anticipate a much smoother process.
Thank you. Appreciate that feedback.
You know, Adrian, as you know, we've been debating the philosophy and methodology of the budget process for the eight years that I've been here. And I would agree with Jim that this is probably the most comprehensive, well-thought-out plan with, although every budget has its degree of uncertainty. I think you have demonstrated that even while fully funding the budget, we still have responsible carryover, where in the past it was not asserted that way, yet we ended up having it. So somehow, we figured out how to make the numbers work. So my kudos to you for sticking to it and figuring it out.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I, we can't do it without the support of our elected officials, so I appreciate Chuck Yu and Prosecutor Blais coming out and being a part of this, so I appreciate it. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
No other questions or comments? They will go to the public hearing in 50 seconds.
Okay, we'll move on to item 17. Commissioner's office question, board move in executive session for purposes of discussing compensation of a public employee pursuant to higher vice code 121.22G1.
And are we just bringing Mindo with us?
Just, just blend.
So I'll make a motion to approve.
So, questions to my right?
And if anyone wants